Good morning. Welcome to our agenda meeting for September the 20th. After the call over, we'll have an invocation by Commissioner Freeman Hardison.
Junior.
I didn't know you were a junior. Pledge of allegiance, I myself will lead that. Approval of the minutes of August 16th and August 29th. Adjustments to the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning. We do have an additional budget amendment, number 119, that will be added under consent. And then we have new business, number three, change order, number two, for the jetport apron addition for the taxiway around the sunshade hangars. That was additional, so that's being added under new business.
And what is that, a work authorization?
Yes.
Okay.
Change order, number one.
A change order?
Yeah. And then you have a budget amendment for ARPA funding for, I think this is for replacement vehicles. I'm sure Angie will go over it when we get to budget amendments.
Oh, excuse me. There's a change order. All right, those are the only additions?
That's it.
Okay, then on special presentations?
Number one is a motion to approve the Louise Daily Shepherd 100th birthday proclamation. Number two...
And Carol, if I could get you to read that for us.
Okay.
Number two is an update on the 911 CAD project by 911 Director Chris Barnes. And number three is an update on Eastern Carolina Council by Executive Director David Bone.
All right, and then, employment committee, we have anything?
We have two of course.
We do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consent?
Consent agenda is applications for disabled veterans exclusion. Number two is applications for elderly or disabled exclusions. And then three is applications for present age value. These have all been verified by the tax office, various departments.
There are a number of them.
There's three of those.
Okay.
And then that carries us down to budget amendments, number four, and I'll turn that over to Angie.
Good morning. Start out with budget amendment number 63 from the library. This is some additional funding that they have received, grant funding from the state library, so we're appropriating the $95,467. Number 88 is from the services on aging. So they have a vacancy, so they're trying to fill the need there with a part-time position that also needs to have an increase in the hourly pay. So we're just re-appropriating some of those line items to make sure that they get that coverage.
Angie, I have your number 80, did you have that?
Yeah, that's a big one.
Can you tell me who that's for?
Fremont Elementary School Capital Project.
Thirty-eight million.
I was at thirty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thirty-eight-nine, that's right at thirty-nine, isn't it?
Okay, well, let's look at number 80 then. So that's to anticipate and appropriate revenues and expenditures for the construction of Fremont Elementary School and reimburse the general fund for proceeds advanced ahead of the debt financing for this project.
Okay, any questions on that?
It's just basically setting up the fund for the Fremont School.
Back up to about $487,000. Back up a little bit. Oh, right there. Back up down a little more.
Okay, next.
A quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
The Dangs and Dangs building this school, right? Are they going to be responsible for the playground equipment, or they put that back in, or they take that back out, or is it still out?
Actually, it's a separate line item. So the schools are actually, are the ones that's going to bid that out and actually purchase that. It's not under their contract.
Okay.
But it's not in that figure though, is it?
It is, right up there. Second, second item, $250,000. Okay, next.
Now we'll move on to 88, which is services on aging, to reallocate those funds to increase the pay so they can get someone hired in that position. This is for their group respite program, and this is covered by the HCCBG, the Home and Community Care Block Grant. Number 91 is from the library. This is to appropriate grant funds to cover a scholarship so that two of their employees can attend the ARSL conference in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Number 98 is for economic development. So this one is to award $262,000 of grant funds for the new pad-ready site. It's also to appropriate the funds for the creation of the new pad-ready site and the county's share of the access road out at Park East. The remaining funds are being appropriated for the construction of the new shell building.
So to further explain that, if I could, $2 million came from the sale of the shell building, $262,000 came from a grant, which we were using to offset the cost of the pad-ready site. However, out of the $2 million, we are going to allocate for road paving to add that additional road into Park East. Any questions?
Do we get any idea when the roads supposed to?
I'm not sure. I think it's...
It's got to go out to bid first.
And they are ready to go ahead and go out to bid on it?
They're securing one of our own call engineers to manage the project.
So when do you think it would go to bid?
I'm not sure I can get an update and send it to you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Next.
Number 99. This is from Sheriff's Office. We have received additional controlled substance funds, and so we need to appropriate those so we can use those. Number 101. This is from Department of Social Services. So when this budget was set up, we didn't know exactly how many funds would be available, so this is to get the budget aligned with what we have received. So $28,377 is being added to the crisis intervention program, all grant funds. Number 104 is to align our camps properly. So this is $13,400 to purchase a, or to install a bypass at the Genoa Sewer. It was just in the wrong line item, so this is just to move it so we can capitalize it.
Okay.
Number 106 is the Health Department. And this is also grant funds. They've been unable to fill a position, so they're moving these funds to the professional services line item, and we're getting assistance from United Way to meet the needs in this Number 108 is the Health Department. Again, this is to realign the budget based on their final approval for the grant funds. This is all from the different family planning grants. Number 109 is Sheriff's Office. This is just to appropriate funds that we have received from insurance to pay for a Number 113 is services on aging. This is to appropriate donations that we have received in the amount of $3,634. The next one is from Department of Social Services in the amount of $124,180. There was a lengthy memo attached to this, and this is basically to provide security services needed for a foster child, as well as meals and lodging.
Does that come out of our...
This is all county funded, and this is only to cover a 60-day period of time.
Sixty days? That's basically two grand a day. Is that right?
Yep.
They're about.
$1920. $1920.
$124,000.
What it says on the cost per day is $10,920.
Plus food.
If I could say, 124 divided by 60 is $2,000 plus dollars a day. It don't matter, that's what it is.
Okay, any more questions on that? All right, next.
The next one is from JCPC. So if funds are not spent, then these agencies have to return those. So they've returned them to us, and now we need to return them to the state, so we have to do a budget amendment so we can pay those out.
Let me ask Mr. Bowen a question. When we get the new building built, is that part that we're talking about, is that, would they stay there instead of having to do? We still got to pay some employee, I guess, but would they be staying at the building like that?
You consider it, but you might in this particular case not want to do.
I got you. I understand.
The last one is the walk-on. You should have received a copy of this. It's number 119, and this has to do with the appropriations for the sheriff vehicles. We are not able to use a set of the ARPA funds to purchase these except for the revenue loss portion. So that, this budget amendment is setting those funds aside from the revenue loss to pay for one set of the vehicles. We've been given information that there's supply chain issues, and we need to go ahead and start moving on our next set. So we are recommending that we go ahead and appropriate next year's allotment this year so we can get those vehicles ordered.
In my understanding, they have to be ordered by October 1st.
I believe that's what we discussed.
They've got a short timeline on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, number five is a motion to approve the Bryan Boulevard property lease for county-owned properties at 806, 834, 848, 874, 888, and 890. Bryan Boulevard to Smart Investors out of Hampstead, North Carolina. Andrew has more information on that, or can answer any questions?
Good morning. This is a property that's located down towards Busco Beach. It's on Bryan Boulevard. When you take that left to go down to the park, it's all FEMA buyout property that's county-owned, so I can't remember which particular buyout it was, but over the years, we've acquired all these parcels. There's a farmer on the back end of this, James Scott, who owns some landlocked property, and Smart Investors LLC is looking to buy that property, however, they need access to it. So what they've proposed is they take a, did they enter into a lease, a FEMA lease with us whereby they would lease the property for up to 10 years. At the end of those 10 years, we could renew it after giving proper notice again. But what I've been told by their council that represents them is they want access so they can get access to that farm. I think there's a lot of sand out there, and they're going to use that to make improvements to the park and upgrade the park. So Smart Investors LLC is actually the company that runs Busco. And if you recall, Mr. James Scott, actually, this has been several months ago, he actually, we had entered into, or you all approved, a lease with Mr. Scott so he could gain access to that property, but he has since backed out, so we still own that property. He's not leasing it, and now he's looking to sell that. There's no compensation for the lease, but usually there isn't for our FEMA properties. The compensation is that the, let's see, just maintains the property, so that way we don't have to go out there and mow it and maintain it ourselves. So it's a cost savings to the county.
So does that back up, so the Smart Investors own Busco Beach?
Yes, sir.
So does this property not butt up to Busco Beach?
It does not, it's across the street. So when you're, when you're coming down, you turn down Bryan Boulevard, and the river's to your right, this property is to the left, right at that turn. For a while, we actually did, this was incorporated into our farm leases, and we would actually lease it out for someone to farm. It's been about three or four years since that's happened. The last farmer that did so, the property wasn't very good for farming, so ended up backing out of that. So we've just been maintaining it ourselves, been mowing it, taking care of it, so.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, number six is a motion to approve the Arthur's Creek subdivision, section one, final plat as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board.
And I think you have several things before us today. Good morning.
Yeah, the first today is Arthur's Creek, section one. It is a final plat. This is the first of several, I think, final plats for Arthur's Creek. This is off of Charlie Brazel Road, just north of the elementary school, Roosevelt Elementary School. They're proposing 18 lots, and the property is zoned RA20, which does require a minimum of 20,000 square foot lots. Their average lot size, though, is 32,900 square feet. Since this is a final plat, all the improvements are in, so the roads are paved. We do have a built-in standards letter from DOT, and the planning board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
How many houses is there?
This one, this phase will have 18 lots.
Who's the developer here?
This is Perry.
Perry.
Builders Bargain Center.
Right. Okay, any more, any questions on that? Okay, next.
All right, the next I have is, this is Finlock Chase, section one. This also is a final plat. They're proposing 22 lots. This is off of Governor Acock Road, right beside the birthplace. It is zoned RA20 as well, with a minimum lot size required of 20,000 square feet. Their average lot size is 22,785 square feet, and as with the other one, all the improvements are in, and we do have a built-in standards letter from DOT. This one, they did ask for some relief with the setbacks, said they asked for variance for the setbacks, for the side. RA20 requires a 20-foot side setbacks that are asking for 10, and then it also requires a 40-foot front setback, and they're asking for a 30-foot setback. So they're asking for 10-foot variance or relief for the side and the front. And actually, the request that they're making is the same as what we would typically allow with a subdivision outside of the zoning area. So it was not unusual to see a 20-foot, excuse me, a 10-foot side and a 30-foot front setback in a subdivision. This one was just a little because of the zoning district that it is in. The planning board did, excuse me, review this request and did recommend approval of the subdivision as well as the variance.
Okay, any questions? And next.
All right, this one is also a final plat, Grand Oaks Phase Two. This is, these are 30 lots located off of Overman Road. This is just south of Old Grantham, where it comes in at Old Grantham Road. They are extending this subdivision, so there is a phase one that's been there for a little while that they're kind of tying into this subdivision. The average lot size for this one is 17,996 square feet, so it is over the 15,000 square foot allowed in this area. It is, since the final plat, the auto improvements are in, so they do have a built-in standards letter from DOT with this one, and then the planning board does recommend approval.
Okay, you got enough?
And the last one I have, now this one's a little different, this one's a preliminary, so this is the start of the process for this one. So there are no improvements in place at this point, so it will come back for you as a final plat later on. They are proposing 86 lots on Massey Road. This is just west of O'Berry Road, or just west of where O'Berry Road comes in at, or intersects with 117. Their average lot size for this subdivision is a little large, 46,802 square feet, so a little over an acre lots they're proposing. Planning board has reviewed this, or this request, and does recommend approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on this one.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's the end of your show today.
Yes, sir.
All right, number 10 is a motion to approve the Wayne County Health Department patient fees eligibility and bad debt write-off policy. That's found on page 82 through pages 95. Changes are marked in red. Anybody here representing?
Well, I recall this coming before the board, Health Board, and it basically brought it into compliance with existing requirements. So there, there had to add or change based upon federal and state requirements.
Okay, moving on to number 11 is a motion to approve the addition of Stonebridge Drive, Auburn Bay Drive, Villa Gray Court, and Aspen Ridge Drive into the Stonebridge, in the Stonebridge subdivision to the state maintenance system as requested by NC DOT. So those streets are now become state-maintained. Number 12 is a motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the Commissioner's Meeting Room in the Wayne County Courthouse annex. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments regarding proposed economic development incentives for Project Barry. We ask that that public hearing be scheduled. Number 13 is a motion to establish a Board of Adjustments Public Hearing on October the 4th, 2022, at 5:30 in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, Fourth Florida Courthouse, for requested 15-foot variance from the road right away of Indian Springs Road and Sanderson Road for property at 4,002 Indian Springs Road in the Indian Springs Township. And Barry may have more information on that if we go over. Actually, you can't go over, don't, don't stick on it. Yeah, just establish that public hearing, of course, he'll go over that at the public hearing. Number 14 is a motion to award the contract for countywide document imaging to Star Point Global Services as recommended by Noel Woods, Wayne County Purchasing Manager. And if she's here, would you like to ask her any questions on that?
If I might. Is it my understanding we currently use this firm, we're just extending the contract?
No, we're not. We actually went, that is true, but we actually went out for a full RFP for it because we do that when our contracts are up, so we actually went out for a full bid to make sure that we had the best deal. So we are actually going with them again, but we went through the whole process.
Okay, so we had, anytime the contracts are up for renewal, you have to put it back out for...
Depending on how the contract is written, yes. And I have Chris Cowan here, just in case you guys have any questions. He's our scanning.
I just wanted to make sure that we've gone through the proper procedures, and I'm sure we have.
We have, but he's our scanning guru, so if you have any scanning questions, he can, he's your man.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you. I just wanted you to get on camera this morning.
Y'all knows to turn it off when I'm here.
Let's see.
All right, next.
Okay, number 15 is a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-33 authorizing by mutual agreement between the City of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne to assign exclusive planning and development regulation jurisdiction from one to the other. Now Barry.
There is a property on Tommy's Road that the property owners looking to develop, and part of it is in Goldsboro's planning jurisdiction or their ETJ, the other part is in our jurisdiction. And so the property owner has requested that the entire property be within the county's jurisdiction, so they're not having to go to both and have a split property with two different sets of regulations. So General Statute 160D, the new statute that regulates planning and zoning, now requires a formal agreement when this takes place. So City of Goldsboro, City Council has approved the agreement or the resolution to allow the county to cover the planning and zoning regulations, and so now that's resolutions before you for you to do the same, to basically say that you will agree, or the county will agree to take the whole property for planning and zoning purposes only. So, and you can see on the map there, number one there is showing the side that's the county, two is the city, so that entire piece would now become the county in terms of our planning and zoning regulations. We've had this in the past where it's just been kind of just, you know, informal agreement, you know, if more of the property's in theirs, they would review it, if more was ours, we would review it. But now the statute requires a formal agreement at this point, so.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, number 16 is a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-34, a resolution declaring surplus real property and authorizing its sale.
Good morning again. This may look familiar. This offer was in front of you at the request of City Council several months ago for the property at 412 East Walnut Street. If you recall, this board didn't take action on it just because the adjoining property owners were not notified. Mr. Oliver came back to the county and wishes to proceed with that offer again for $5,000. He is, I believe, related to adjoining property owner. I'm not sure if he actually resides at 410 East Walnut, but I know that he's related to her, so I think there was some confusion about that as well. But he's made the offer on behalf of his LLC. It's right there at the corner of East Walnut and then Carnegie. So the offer, what he proposed was $5,000. I believe that's similar to what he previously had offered the county and the city. I have included all the materials, including the letters to the adjoining property owners. There's two that needed to be notified. Those went out last week, and it notifies them that the offer was going to be considered today, and when the upset bidding period begins, and how, and includes the public notice, so they are informed on how they can submit a bid if they want to upset that bid.
Well, good.
And if it's approved, then it would go to the City Council for their approval.
Any questions?
Back it up a little step. Back, back down, down.
That's just the offer from Mr. Oliver, this letter right here.
Get another Z right on it.
Yeah.
Man, you got a key in eye today.
But the deposit he put down was for the $5,000 offer.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Number 17 is a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-35, a resolution adopting the 43rd Amendment to the Position Classification and Pay Plan for Wayne County, North Carolina. And I believe Ginger is here.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
We are asking to reclassify a position that's currently labeled as IT Support Specialist MRAC. We're asking to reclassify that to the Maxwell Center and retitle it Audiovisual and Media Specialist. Some years back, it was our thought that an IT specialist and an audiovisual person were the same thing, and it's two very different jobs. So we're asking to reclassify it so we can properly advertise and keep that position filled.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Okay, let's see here.
Number 18 is a motion to adopt resolution for the state ARPA funds application for the Jetports Parking Lot Drainage Improvements Project for the Wayne Executive Jetport, an appropriate budget amendment. This is, I think they're applying for planning funds. They previously were denied project funds, but they were told that they would, or be eligible for planning funds, so they're reapplying.
And how much are they applying for?
Eh, good question. I don't have it on top of my, wait a minute. No, I do not have it. I told you I can get that for you.
Yeah, I forgot what they had asked for.
Seems like it was 60, 70,000, something like that, maybe.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
We can find out. I'll get that information to you.
I'm just, so what's the difference in what they're requesting and what they're going to do? If they apply for one thing and then you're applying for something different, what's actually getting done?
They're actually, you're good questions. I think that one of them is actually a planning grant fund instead of an actual project fund so they can go through and pay for the engineering work to be done, to my knowledge. It's not actually for any actual construction, but to pay for the engineering of the project that's to be completed. So it's just a fraction of what the total cost was going to be.
Yeah, they were, got a little ahead of themselves. They actually applied for the project and was denied, and they stated that what they would need to do is to go ahead and actually do the engineering work. They would approve that, and then later would possibly approve the project, but they needed it engineered first.
And these are not local ARPA funds. These are state ARPA funds for drainage and infrastructure. And sewer.
And that's where the engineer kind of misled them. They should have advised them that they needed to do the planning and actually had the plans drawn out before they applied for the state funds.
Has the county applied for any of these drainage funds anywhere else in this county? Because I mean, we have, we have, I mean, all kinds of drainage issues, and I feel like that those drainage issues are way more important than the jetport, in my personal opinion, when you have houses flooding, businesses flooding, all those type things that we could be applying for also. So I, you know, to me, I mean, sitting here as in my district where I know there's flooding, you know what I mean, that's kind of sort of an insult that we haven't applied for, but you're telling me that we're applying for these funds at a jetport, which Berry, probably nobody in my district would use, ever use their jetport, which probably most people up here, I mean, the 1% of the 1% are using their jetport, you know what I mean, in Wayne County. Most of them probably don't even live here. So, I mean, I think that, you know, that's something that we need to look into, you know what I mean? If there are funds available for drainage, why aren't we looking into them for all the places that are getting flooded, that we need help in?
I agree.
I do want to point out one thing, though. That parking lot actually serves the Wayne Community College Aviation Department, and it floods all the time, and that's one of the reasons why they were trying to get those funds so it would alleviate that flooding there on the parking lot for the aviation department.
I mean, that's.
But you're well taken.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, but like I said, I still think there's so much, if there's a fund out here available, you know what I mean? I feel like we need to be applying for it. I'm watching places apply for different funds and grants and stuff. We're not, if they're out here and it's free funds, why aren't we applying for it for somewhere around the county?
The biggest part of this project is a sewer, an upgrade to the sewer lift station there. Most of the money's are for sewer systems that are tagged at risk. The county does not own a sewer system that is at risk, so we're not eligible for a lot of the sewer funds, ARPA funding that is available for sewer. This, however, is connected on to the Fremont Sewer System, which is an eligible system, which does qualify us to apply for that funding. And I think that's what's the difference in that. I'm not disagreeing. There is other drainage issues around that could be addressed, and we have addressed in some grants and have applied in some, for some grants to address those issues as we have in the past.
Are you saying this, this?
This is, part of this is sewer, a lift station that's there is being upgraded.
Right, I'm just asking, in these ARPA funds, though, is it specifically for that? Or is there a wide range of things that we're still not?
It's mostly for sewer.
You know what I mean? So, Steve, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's still funds that we could use in other places.
I think overall, the sign that we can, we can get our grant writer on board, that we can start to kind of see if we can get a lot of these grants that are going to help us with our flooding issues and other concerns throughout the county, too. To me, we've been kind of slow-moving on that. Ever since our retreat, we haven't seen any progress with our grant writers. So I'd like us to kind of move forward on that.
I'm not, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, I'm just, are you at a position to possibly give us a brief update in regards to?
No, sir.
We're not.
We're doing the interview process right now.
Okay.
You have to have qualified candidates.
We're moving along behind the scenes more than maybe we do know, but we're moving. Okay, next.
All righty, let's.
Chairman Doherty, may we add to that appropriate budget amendment on the change order for the airport?
Yes. It doesn't say, it does say that, does it not?
Yes.
It says appropriate budget.
Okay, and also, can we go back one on the IT position moving to the Maxwell Center?
Yes.
And appropriate budget amendment for that as well because we'll need to move the funds from the IT department over to the Maxwell Center budget to cover that position.
Ginger, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Yes, so we'll add appropriate budget amendments in regards to Item 17 as well. If there's any objection.
Okay.
All right, moving on to number 19. A motion to terminate the lease agreement with Lamar Advertising for the billboard located at 800 Corporate Drive, Goldsboro, North Carolina.
Good morning again. This is the last thing I have for you, I think. So if you recall, in May, I included a memo, but in May of this year, we bought 800 Corporate Drive, which is located at the intersection of Cleeman and Corporate, and it's going to join our future DSS and Health. When we bought that, we also assumed a lease with Lamar Advertising. There's actually a billboard that's located on that property. And after we bought it, we researched it to understand exactly what the terms are. Initially, it was a 10-year lease, but that expired several years ago, and it's on a year-to-year lease at this point. So we reached out to Lamar to see what our renewal options are, what our purchase options are. The main concern that staff had would be with the DSS and Health Department going up there and not having control over the content that would be on that billboard. We had concerns about some messaging that may go on that billboard, which would be inconsistent with DSS and Health. I mean, you could kind of think of anything you can, but obviously, we want to control the message out there. So we reached out to Lamar and asked them if we could actually purchase the billboard at the expiration of the lease. They indicated that they don't do that, that they disassemble the billboards and then they remove them off the property. So currently, it's set to expire in March of next year. We wanted to go ahead and get that in front of you. With that information, our recommendation would be to go ahead and terminate the lease, let them get that off the property. And then if we wanted to incorporate a new sign as part of our construction, we can certainly do that. But we wanted to go ahead and get this addressed before it renewed, and we're in the middle of construction, and there were some issues on the property.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's it under the consent agenda?
Well, actually, are you adding that to consent?
No, this is under new business. Under new business, motion to approve a change in the convenience center site hours for Wayne County Landfield. And Mr. Rogers is here, if you'd like to go over that with us. Oh, he actually can go over that in a meeting. No need to discuss it now.
Okay, all right.
And then number 2 is a motion to approve Task Order Number 4 of the Master Services Agreement between Wayne County and CDM Smith for the Wayne County DSS HD Commissioning Services Project, an appropriate budget amendment. And number 3 would be Change Order Number 2 for the Goldsboro Wayne Airport Apron Rehab. They're adding an existing taxi lane adjacent to the Sunshade Hangars. It's in poor condition. It needs to be replaced. It's qualified for state funding. So they're adding this as Change Order Number 2.
Is that through state funds?
Yeah. Yes, sir. And then we go to public comments.
Andrew, do I need to put appropriate budget amendment on that, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so after the new business, we have public comments, then county managers' report, Board of Commissioners committee reports and comments. Closed session. Do we have a closed session today?
Yes, sir.
You do? And how long is that closed session? We don't have time now for that, do we?
Not a complete.
Okay, well, then let's hold off on the closed session. As an adjournment. Do note that our next regular meeting is October 4th, and it will be at 5 o'clock with the agenda briefing at 4 o'clock. So that's our evening meeting, and that will be our next meeting. Okay, anything else on our agenda meeting? Then we'll be in recess until 9 o'clock.